All right, good evening. Good evening, welcome to this August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting in the Norfolk City Council. To begin, I'll call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If not, please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please be.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Klaassen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Your Honor, I'll be abstaining from the consent agenda voting.
Okay, so noted. Motion at second, no discussion, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Granquist, Arnz, Merrill, Muren, Jackson, Hildebrand, abstaining McCarthy and Klaassen, motion carries.
Okay, then I would look for a motion to approve the full agenda with one change, the removal of item number thirty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item thirty-three on the council agenda under special presentations. The proclamation to read tonight honoring August third, two thousand twenty-two as U.S. Heartland Global Leadership Day. The proclamation reads as such, whereas Norfolk is a globally connected city with sister cities including Blantyre, Malawi, as well as maintaining a wide variety of global relationships, and Nebraska's agricultural exports contribute to America's global effort to fighting hunger and poverty, providing jobs, and contributing seven point one billion to the Nebraska economy. And whereas Nebraska colleges and universities, including Northeast Committee College, together enroll over five thousand three hundred twenty students per year, including international students, contributing nearly one hundred and sixty-six million to Nebraska's economy, and the work of America's diplomats and development professionals, many from Nebraska, who are on the front lines around the world, helps protect our citizens here at home. And whereas nineteen sixty, since nineteen sixty-one, over fourteen hundred Peace Corps volunteers from Nebraska have served overseas, and U.S. leadership through investments in diplomacy and global development is critical to protect the health, security, and economic interests of Norfolk's citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two as U.S. Heartland Global Leadership Day. Is there anyone here to receive the proclamation tonight? If you don't believe so, so we will move on to item number thirty-four under public hearings and related action. And I'll open this public hearing concerning an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant, CDGB, in the amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for commercial rehabilitation in the form of downtown facade improvements. And to kick off discussion on this public hearing, I believe we're hearing from Andrea Larson of the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District.
Hi, I'm Andrea Larson, I'm with Northeast Economic Development District. Basically, I've been working with the City of Norfolk's Economic Development Group, and the City of Norfolk is requesting four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of community development block grant, CDGB funds, of which three hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars will be used for commercial rehabilitation in the form of downtown facade improvement. The need for facade improvement was identified through a Norfolk downtown business survey that took place earlier this year. The downtown facade improvement program will provide a one-to-one match with three hundred and seventy-three thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars being provided by local business owners who take part in the grant program. Twenty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars will be used for the sidewalk improvements of three mid-block crossings on Norfolk Avenue to provide street-to-sidewalk accessibility between Second and Third Street, Third and Fourth Street, and Fourth and Fifth Street. The project will include the removal and replacement of one hundred and eighty-six square yards of pavement, the incorporation of three hundred and sixty-four linear feet of polyurethane pavement marking, and the installation of detectable warning panels. The need for this project was determined through an engineering survey of the area. The City of Norfolk will provide six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in matching funds for the sidewalk improvements. Also included in this grant ask is ten thousand dollars, which will be used for construction management, and twenty-five thousand dollars for general administration of the grant. There is no matching fund requirement on that. The estimated total cost of the downtown revitalization project is eight hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars, and it will meet national objective of minimizing a designated blighted and substandard area, and to provide for limited clientele through the removal of architectural barriers. No persons will be displaced as a result of these activities.
Any questions for Andrea? Andrea, there is some history of utilizing this grant program in the community. I believe four or five years ago, we applied for and received a similar kind of grant for facade improvements, and that also included some downtown revitalization, help with things like brush reconstruction. So this is a smaller grant application as compared to that, is that accurate?
Right, yeah, and we actually just finished up and are in the closeout process of that last downtown revitalization phase. There were a lot of facade improvements that were made downtown that you guys have probably seen, there's some green space that was incorporated into that, it was successful.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, hearing and seeing no one, move to close the hearing and advance to item number thirty-five, would look for a motion to consider resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-seven approving a grant application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a CDGB grant in the amount of four hundred and thirty-five thousand and authorizing the mayor to proceed with formulation of any and all contracts, documents, or other memoranda between the City of Norfolk and the Nebraska Department of Economic Development so as to effect acceptance of the grant.
I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-seven approving the grant application.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion on this council? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-seven is adopted.
Okay, brings us to our regular agenda and agenda item number thirty-six. Would look for a motion to consider approval. Consider approval of ordinance number fifty-seven ninety-five, annexing attractive land generally located southeast of the intersection at Highway thirty-five and east Benjamin Avenue. As a note, this ordinance passed on first reading at the July eighteenth city council meeting and second reading on August first, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-seven ninety-five on second read.
Second.
It's on third.
Excuse me, third read.
Okay, motion second, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to annex to said city attractive land lying in the east half of the northeast quarter, lying south of Highway number thirty-five right-of-way, including the highway right-of-way lying adjacent to said tract in section twenty-four, Township twenty-four North, Range One west of the Sixth PM, Madison County, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, and since this is passed on first and second readings with discussion, state law does not permit discussion on third reading, so we would proceed right to a vote, so please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven ninety-five carries on third reading.
Okay, it takes us to item number thirty-eight. Would entertain a motion to consider approval of amendment number one to the engineering agreement with Clark and Anderson Incorporated for Highway eighty-one and Highway two-seventy-five Master Landscape Improvements Project for an amount not to exceed two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars.
I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-eight.
Second.
Motion second, and for some background on this, we'll hear from Steve Ramis, our city public works director.
I think you went to the first reason on number thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven was raised from the.
Yes, so the motion as stated was.
Ignore that one, that was stricken, wasn't it?
Okay, okay, so I have a motion.
Approval of the amendment, sorry, consideration of approval amendment number one.
Okay, all right. And a second too.
Second.
Okay, motion in second to the underlying provision under item thirty-eight to kick off discussion on this and give us some background, Steve Ramis, our city public works director.
Mayor and council, Clark Anderson was put under contract to lead the efforts for the landscape master plan design for highways two-seventy-five and Highway eighty-one corridors. Earlier this spring, they had brought proposals to the table for a variety of concepts for those corridors. We had a public meeting, it was early May, the public participation was extremely low, and so as we sought, sought ways to try and engage the public a little bit different than our typical public meetings, this conveyor program was something that they brought to the table, they used this in the Lincoln Haymarket project, thought it was extremely successful there, were able to target, steering committee members were able, were able to target businesses on the corridor, and we can push that out to the entire community as well. And so we see this as a very cost-effective way to really gather the support and feedback from the community and those business owners on those corridors to help, help guide that project and make sure that we're delivering the right project for the community.
Okay, thank you, Steve. And just for some background on this, this initiative, the Master Landscape Improvements Plan goes back to a council back in two thousand nine that approved this originally, and the money for it was allotted at that time, but has not been fully utilized to this point. So we are acting on a previous plan that has not been carried out.
Correct.
Is that accurate?
So what, yeah, that is correct, and what we would see happening here is we would want to bring Clark Anderson back for a public presentation, possibly to a work session, at least to a subcommittee, present that so that the public can hear that and see that presentation, and then go ahead and open up this, this public input software shortly thereafter to start pushing that out to the public.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or discussion on that, council? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item thirty-nine, would look for a motion to consider resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-nine approving the direction to give notice of redemption to call the nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of outstanding Series two thousand seventeen refunding building bonds.
I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-nine, second.
Motion in second, and to get some background on this, we'll hear from Sheila Rios, city finance assistant.
Mayor and council, at the July twenty-fifth budget review session, the council voted to pay off the outstanding Series two thousand seventeen refunding building bonds with general fund reserves. Debt service on these bonds has been funded with council priority dollars, and paying off the bonds will free up approximately one hundred and twenty-five thousand annually to be used on council priority projects. These bonds were issued by the City of Norfolk Facilities Corporation through a lease purchase agreement with the city to finance the purchase and improvement of the city administration building. Title of the building passes to the city when the bonds are paid. The nine hundred and seventy-five thousand of outstanding bonds are expected to be paid on September thirtieth, subject to approval by the Facilities Corporation. The Facilities Corporation has a meeting on Wednesday to consider approval of paying off these bonds.
All right, thank you, Sheila. Any questions, council, or discussion on this?
Well, everybody knows out here, that's essentially paying this building off that we're in right now.
Sheely said that meeting was this coming Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. You're looking for a second.
And again, Shane, for public record, just expand on that a little bit, this was, this came out of a discussion we had during our budget, annual budget review sessions, seeing that we had, we had the funds to do it, to pay off the bond early, and it made more fiscal sense to do that than allow it to fully mature, so. Okay, any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-nine is adopted.
Item forty, would look for a motion to consider resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash forty, amending section six of resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash two, increasing the allowable amount of time for repayment of debt for expedited tax increment financing projects from ten years to fifteen years.
I'd offer for consideration resolution two thousand twenty-two dash forty.
Second.
Motion in second, and for some background on this, we'll hear from Andy Colvin, our city administrator.
Thank you, mayor and council. This resolution will, just as it said, will increase the provisions of our micro TIF law, which is expedited review TIF. The city originally adopted that in January of this year. State law did change this last session to change it from ten years to fifteen years to be able to have that TIF debt. So for qualifying projects under the TIF, this micro TIF law, this will allow that to go for fifteen years instead of ten, which will allow additional investment in redevelopment of qualified projects in the community.
Thank you, Andy, any questions on that?
It made sense considering that TIF, normal TIF is fifteen years anyway, so.
And again, that was made possible by a statewide law change earlier this year. We have had some developer interest in that change being adopted here locally, so. Any other discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash forty is adopted.
Takes us to item number forty-one, look for a motion to consider approval of an interlocal agreement between the City of Norfolk and Madison County to join together for the administration of a public infrastructure project for the police division building expansion and renovation, the construction of a new indoor aquatic center, Tahoe Zuka Park slash sports complex addition and improvements, and various street improvements and reconstructions.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion second, and again, we'll hear from Andy Colvin for some background on this, please.
Thank you, mayor and council. This agreement you have before you will be with Madison County. Anytime a city wants to increase the sales tax by half percent for that, what's known as that local option sales tax, which is going to be discussed later on in this agenda, part of that, part of the requirements cities have to comply with is to have an interlocal with another political subdivision. The city did have this for the last local option sales tax with the library, we did have an agreement with Madison County. This agreement is drafted very similarly to, very similar to that agreement as well. And I guess you could look at this as really kind of an accountability agreement as well. The county's going to be a partner at the table, we have to provide reports to see how the, if approved by the voters, would, how the tax is being collected, how the projects are being built, progress, and things like that. So there's no financial obligation on part of the county at all, it's really just an additional oversight to, in, in, improve and increase that transparency as we, we look to possibly put this on the ballot for November.
Thank you, Andy, any questions on that, council?
Yeah, I have one, so we, the city will need to approve this, so will, will the county also go through the same process?
Yes, the county, my understanding is, has this on their agenda for tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And again, Andy, this is required by state law to enter into interlocal agreements like this on such project proposals, not requiring any monetary or funding commitment from the county in this instance.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Okay, if not, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Granquist, Arnz, Merrill, Muren, Jackson, Klaassen, Hildebrand, voting in opposition, McCarthy, motion carries.
All right, takes us to item forty-two, would look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two dash forty-one submitting to the registered voters of the City of Norfolk at the general election to be held November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the question of authorizing the collection of an additional one-half of one percent sales and use tax to pay the cost to construct, acquire, renovate, improve, furnish, and equip an indoor aquatic center, expansion and renovation of the police station, street and related improvements, and improvements to Tahoe Zuka Park slash sports complex, including paying principal and interest on bonds to finance or refinance these projects.
I will offer for consideration resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash forty-one.
Second.
Okay, motion in second, and we will enter into the discussion portion of this process, given the level of community interest, we are going to, to allow for the opportunity for public input, should that be desired. We do have ground rules as such in that each person who wishes to comment can do so once, and they are limited to five minutes, and that will, that time will be kept by our city clerk, and she has a couple of cards here to indicate, first the yellow card, when you've reached the four-minute mark and have one minute left, and then the red card when your time has expired. So I think we'll start there with any, any public input that is desired to be.
Would it be beneficial to start like talking with streets?
Um, yes, I'm sorry, that's right, Shane, we should do the presentation, I got ahead of myself, we have had a work session today to, to present these proposals to the public and their projected cost, but yes, that is the appropriate time to do that now, and then take public input based on that. So I would turn it over to Andy Colvin, city administrator, to lead that process of presenting us the different components of the plan.
Sure, thank you, mayor and council. I think what we'll probably do for this part of the meeting is have our, essentially the same discussions that we've had, some of our subcommittees, open houses, work sessions, things like that. And I think if that's kind of where, where the council would like to see, we'll have maybe Chief Miller get up and talk about the same things that he has, and then we'll have Steve Ramis, we'll talk about some of the street projects and updates for that, and then Nate Powell can talk about some of the recreation improvements for aquatics as well as Tahoe Zuka Park sports complex improvements as well. So if that's okay with the council, we'll have, Chief Miller can come up and go through a summary of that, and, and I, we can put up some more pictures and visuals if that's something that we want to do, we can certainly do that again.
Yes.
Evening, mayor and city council. Of course, having you heard the, heard this, but I will go through the same information again for the benefit of the great turnout that we've had tonight, this is, this is As a little bit of background, our police division building was built in nineteen eighty-six, moved into in nineteen eighty-seven, and at that timeframe, we had a total of thirty officers and forty-one employees occupying the building. The building was designed, my understanding is with a twenty-year lifespan anticipated, we are now well over thirty years into this, and services have grown, our staffing has grown, our needs have grown, and we've found ourselves literally bursting at the seams. We have literally offices and hallways with copiers and desks and stuff, just trying to, to function the best we can under the circumstances. The building has not had any major renovations during that timeframe up until recently. As you know, we've taken over dispatching for Madison County, we now have a regional dispatch center that dispatches for eighteen agencies in Madison and Stanton County. That included a little bit of additional staff to accomplish that, and it's been, we started that a little over a year ago, it's been working out great. We've also, knowing that we were out of space, went ahead with the renovation of our police division facility because we determined that was the best avenue to do that in our building, and that further cramped our space when we made that addition. Our original building had seventeen thousand, has seventeen thousand three hundred and sixty-five square feet. As we were looking at this in our, in our processes, we looked at, you know, how do we go forward, and we hired an architectural firm to do what's called a space needs assessment. They look at every function of the police division, every patrol and investigations, evidence, went through the entire process to determine what are our needs. And one of the thing that's different from past years is people think of a police facility, they think of a police department only. Well, our building has actually four entities under one roof. We have the police division, obviously, we have the city jail, we have our now regional dispatch center, and we have the city attorney's office. This works really well for us because it's utilizing our, our resources to accommodate our needs, but again, we're busting at the seams. As we went through that space needs assessment, they came to the determination, this was in two thousand twenty that we did this, that we should have twenty-two thousand eight hundred and six square feet just to operate as we are today. Even since two thousand twenty, we've grown some of our staffing and services, so we're already seeing an increase from that, but, but that's, that's what it is. It doesn't make any sense to build a facility for today's needs because tomorrow we've already outgrown it. So they projected out thirty years, using the last thirty years as a guide, you never know for sure what's going to happen. We projected thirty years into the future, and based on those projections, what should we have? And they anticipated, the space needs assessment anticipated we should have twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand five hundred and forty-four square feet. Also part of this is determining the site plan. Does it make sense to stay where you're at, to renovate or add onto the building, or start all over with a, with a whole new location? What's the most cost-effective way, what's, you know, the best overall? I was happy to find out that it made sense to stay in our current facility, we like where we're at in the downtown area, it works very, very well for our purposes, and so we came up with this plan for the police renovation. Now, this has been, as I said, an ongoing process because we knew we wanted to do the dispatch renovation, but I didn't want to build walls today that I'm going to tear down tomorrow for the renovation. So we had a general idea what we were going to do to make sure we go through this process once. The plan that you have in your packet is, is pretty close to a final plan. The city has allocated funds for the architectural work, so we are going through the architectural work as we speak, and the hope is to have that done approximately November, to have a true, ready-to-go-to-bid product in November. As part of all this, you know, we talked about budgets, and that's one of the things that we brought, we talked about earlier today. And as you look at the budget, we have three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we are spending for the architectural costs right now, and that's going to be paid through tax anticipation bonds. And to your question earlier, councilman, that's what that police fund was, and the income side is, it was three hundred thousand, it should have been three hundred and seventy-five thousand, that would be getting bonds to pay for what we're doing right now prior to the architectural work starting. We are looking at approximately, let's see, get my right numbers here. numbers here, seven, right, that's a little over seven point seven million dollars total for the police renovation. That includes five point nine million for the actual construction. That's the construction. It doesn't include the desks, the computers, the tables, the chairs, shelving, all the things that you're going to need as part of that process. So that's where that number gets escalated a little bit. So, I can go on quite a while on the different concepts. Now, what I will say, I talked about our staffing. We had forty-one people in our building and when it was built, we are now have sixty-six people in our building. So we've had a significant growth, and we have outgrown it by quite a bit. We've gone from thirty officers to forty-three, plus our various support staff, dispatchers, and that type of thing. So, it's a substantial increase with no changes in the past. We're hoping that this passes so that we can start our addition renovation to be able to function better for, for the community. Hiring retention is a challenge for law enforcement nowadays. I have to believe that this pro, or this renovation would be a big boost for the hiring retention, both the officers being able to operate in a, in a normal fashion, as well as being able to recruit people to a, to a facility that they see is, is operating as effectively as it can compared to, say, desks and hallways and, and various other things that we've talked about before. Do you have any questions that I can, I'll let your questions kind of drive where it go. I could, I could talk for a long time about this.
Chief, I guess I just have a comment that's kind of stuck out since we started talking about this a year ago. The conversation that you and I've had is, what happens after hours when you have juveniles that come in? What, what do you do with them in the facility you have right now?
Well, that, juveniles are a challenge because we don't have a facility for juveniles. We have an adult jail for, that we can hold people, but we can't put juveniles in there. And that's day or night. It doesn't make any difference. And so, what, we literally end up, we put a chair in the hallway, and officer sits with them while they do their paperwork, until we can find a place for them to go or get their family to come. I think what you're probably referring to is one of the photos I showed of a juvenile from Omaha, that it took more than twelve hours for the family to get up here to pick him up, and he got tired, so we had a jail mattress in the hallway while he slept, and we sat and watched him while, you know, while he, we can't, we can't leave him unattended. The new facility, that's one of the things, our new facility, it has a juvenile holding room. The door's not locked, but it has a window so that they can, they can lay on a cot, they can read a book, they can do whatever, and the officer can monitor them while they're doing their paperwork and be efficient in that process compared to, you know, what we're doing, what we're trying to struggle with right now. Thank you. Any other questions?
Chief, we talked about it a little bit earlier today, but just for public record here, in terms of the, the budget options to fund this, you're, the, the police division budget year to year focuses primarily on operations, what you need to, to get by year to year. So, funding for this, even if you tried to save, would, a little bit each year would, would not get it built anytime soon, which is why we look here at this potential through the local option sales tax to accelerate the process, correct?
That's correct. Our budget is, I call it a maintenance budget. It's, you know, year to year, there's a struggle to meet our budgets, and there, there's virtually almost no room in it for saving up for anything even related to this. So, that's correct.
But, good point, because that's one of the questions that I haven't asked, too, is could you fund this without a half percent sales tax? So, real quick, if, if, if you did have to finance it, would that be a twenty? Could you do a twenty-year on that, or no?
Yes, you can do a twenty-year bond on that, but it would have to be voter-approved. Public safety can, they can pay debt service up to five cents on valuation, but this would be, put them over their five cents. So regardless, this would be voted, and it would be...
So it would come out of your admin budget, then? It'd have to come out of public safety budget altogether?
It couldn't be financed with a property tax levy because it would be over the five cents. That is allowed for...
So there would be a possibility you could finance it with council priority dollars?
To issue the bonds, like, if you're trying to save up, yeah, you can save up, but like Don said, that's going to take, that, that's going to take years.
Yeah.
So if you're issuing, you want to be able to issue the bonds.
So essentially, you couldn't go and say, hey, we saw the, but we've just gone, we've just, the budget's fresh, and we just went through it. You couldn't say, well, take three point six million out of the beginning balance, pay down of that eight million, get it down to like three, four point four million, and then issue a twenty-year bond on that, which would intend to be about six hundred thousand a year. That would be no possibility. Okay.
Uh-uh. Nope.
Gotcha. Well, I just wanted to get that out there because that's the question that was asked. How, how would that work? And I didn't know for sure. But, that would be one way to do it, but then, we just voted tonight to pay this building off here, and that freed up one hundred and twenty-five thousand of council priority dollars. Council priority dollars is about four hundred thousand a year, and it's really the only tool the city council has to reinvest back into the community when people come in and ask, you know, I want to trail here, or we want to do some of this stuff. So that's, and so tonight, that was one of the votes that happened. We, we freed up one hundred and twenty-five of that, so that's a big deal, really, honestly, by paying this building off. But, so it, so it's a non, non, non problem or a non-issue then, obviously. So, you, the only way to do this would be with the five, the ask of the five, the half percent?
Yes.
Okay. So, Nina, thanks.
I, yeah. I think the only way to get it done in any kind of timely manner in which we've seen some of these larger projects that get delayed only costs more and more the longer you wait to do them. So, and I would note, too, in this process, the discussion of the needs of the facility, knowing that you're bursting at the seams. These discussions started, what, more than a year ago, year and a half?
Several, several. We've talked about it on and off for probably up to ten years. Some people say the building was too small when it was built, that they just were struggling, but this is where we are.
All right. Any other questions for Chief Miller?
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Moving next to the streets improvement plan. Presented by Steve Ramis, city public works director.
Mayor and council, with, within the work session pack were these two slides, one for the intersections throughout the community at four million dollars, and the other slide that was in this, this effort, and this work session pack was this slide for street repairs, anywhere from six to eight million, bringing in the total in, in that ten to twelve million effort. Within the PowerPoint presentation, there are links here to open up a section of the city's website. So I'll ask Lyle, I think he's got that prepped up here. If you go right to the, and he's passed that, he's one page in, but on the very front homepage of the city page is a, is a, says city projects, and if you click that tab, it'll bring you into here. Right here is a, is a icon that says plans, street improvements, street improvement plans. So go, if you click on that, Lyle, that'll take you into some of the maps for our planned street improvements. Go ahead and click into, click into that. Let's see. Oh, yeah, click on that one, and then the intersection map. There you go. So this is a bigger, this is the full map of the intersection map. What we have done, engineering staff has gone out and looked at every intersection in the community, and the condition of that, they brought it back in and through some GIS tools plotted that. They've attached an icon, that green icon. What that does is tell us what needs to be repaired in that intersection, whether it's one approach, which is that first twenty-five feet, kind of where the curved radius is, one approach, two approach, three approaches, four approaches, or the entire intersection. We have put numbers to that, and that is that four million dollars to go in there and revamp all the intersections. That's important to us, I guess, a couple of things, is why are the intersections in such bad shape? Well, that's where water tends to congregate. It's where we tend to, when we're, during our winter snow moving events, that's where we tend to salt heavier, so the deterioration is greater. When we look at our citywide pavement condition index, that's a number between one and a hundred. Our city payment index is in that mid-upper fifty range, fifty-six, fifty-seven. As we look at this particular project and repairing these, pretty confident that's going to bring our, our pavement condition up about five points into the low sixties. You know, you look at these, and in many cases, it's that intersection that's the worst section of the street. So that's, that's where this comes into play. As we're looking at these, there are a few of these that need some drop inlets and storm sewer work at the same time. It's really spread fairly well through, through the various wards. It's certainly heavier in the older parts of town, so where there's wards that, that cover both that, that older end of town. You'll see a lot more work in that area. At the top of this particular sheet, you'll see a list of the various intersection improvements, one approach, two approach, three approach, four approach, or the entire intersection, and how, how those numbers lay out per ward. So that's the intersection improvements. The next slide there is the, kind of our, our, kind of one of our master planning tools for street repairs across the community. Where we intend to plug in this six to eight million dollars would be in the green component of this map. The green represents concrete street repairs. So that's going into these neighborhoods and repairing where we have a lot of delamination, cracking, de-cracking, just breaking up of the slab. The other things that, when you're on there, that this map is showing where you see yellow, yellow is where we're intending to come in at some point, either after the street is repaired and do a mill and overlay, an asphalt overlay on that street. The brown represents where we have existing asphalt in the community, and those are areas that we need to be maintaining with chip seals or slurry seals on about a five-year basis. We want to be more planned on that and progressive there. Some of the other colors here, the blue would represent some potential full reconstructions, and then there's some agenda down there in the southern end where we have gravel streets, and the agenda represents where there is potential for paving some streets that just aren't paved right now. But for purposes of this, this, this tax initiative, the focus would be on the green, the concrete repair, to get that base concrete street back in, in good shape to, to look at, either potentially an asphalt overlay, or just to remain as a concrete street. The other thing I would say, and we'll, we'll have more information on this as we present our snow plan later, but we are revamping our snow plan. We intend to really hit the streets as soon as snow flies so that we're not salting so heavy and have to hit those streets real hard with chemical. We think that's going to make our system last longer. Any questions?
Okay. So again, this has been brought up to me about why we would need this to help with street improvements instead of just using the CHAF tax that we've been doing, which accounts for about three point seven million of the street budget, and then today you talked about another three hundred thousand that you get through fees. So you have four million essentially for your street budget, and then you said you'd need about four point five million for your, that properly maintained streets?
So, overall, when you look at Grand Island or Carney, those are cities that have been very progressive in the last five to ten years on their streets, they have implemented some sort of a tax, sales tax, to help fund their street improvements. If you look at our total plan, this map right here, and look at all of the streets, that this, I think this is an easy way to look at it. This is four hundred and fifty million dollars worth of streets. If you were to put it all in the ground today, rough cost, four hundred and fifty million. If every one of these streets lasts a hundred years, that means every year we should be replacing one percent of our streets. One percent of four hundred and fifty million is four and a half million. That's just in repair. That's not the annual joint sealing, slurry seals, or anything like that on our asphalt roads, or, you know, this annual, the street repair, pavement marking, any of that, signal maintenance. So, you know, we need, with the four million we have, we're, we're, I would say, we're a million and a half to two million short of really being able to stabilize and maintain our street system long-term.
So, with the twenty million dollar bond that passed for the big improvement projects that we had going on, that's going to cut you back down to like, what, two point nine is all you'd have left over each year for the CHAF? And the CHAF tax, to be fair, isn't a property, it is a gasoline tax. That's what you, when you go to the pump.
Correct.
That we receive from the state.
Part of that percentage coming back to the city, the city of Norfolk. That's where that comes from. Majority of your streets are fixed through that map.
Correct.
But, I guess if you don't do this, you know...
We're going to continue to deteriorate. When you, if you were to look at the deterioration curve, it looks generally like this. Here's new CPI index of a hundred, and here's, you've lost it, you know, a seat, pavement condition of twenty.
I'm just doing carpet around here.
So we're, we're somewhere down in here, and we need to get back up in here so that we can just plug in that three and a half million a year and maintain them. It's going to take us a while to get our system back up.
If you don't, if, if, say that if there wasn't a half percent sales tax at the end of this twenty-year investment we're talking about, you'd be off to the tune of thirty-two million dollars of what you should have reinvested. As if you do invest, you take the deferred maintenance from the twenty million dollar bond and the twelve thousand you're passing initially, that's thirty-two million deferred maintenance. That then would be, you'd be short about four hundred thousand a year to hitting your goal, which if our budget looks like it hasn't, you should be able to absorb that with no sort of property tax increase for streets moving into the future. So, I guess, when you break it down that way, it does look, try and answer the question of somebody today. They had called me, and I was, you know, I just wanted to...
So, I think in other words, you could say, we already started somewhat in a deficit as to how much we spend on annual maintenance and repair. I, I think the number you used at the local media, Steve, in report last week was two million. Like you just said, historically, we've been about two million dollars short of what we should be spending for maintenance and repair. And then you add on top of that, that our CHAF budget year to year is limited now because we've had to tackle big projects like Benjamin Avenue reconstruction through a bond, and it puts us that much further behind.
Well, I think without the, the fact that we did delay so long on those, those projects didn't happen, like, like twenty thirteen, you know, the Candace got kicked down the road for so long, that it put us in a situation now where you, where the heat goes up to where they go, not, you know, you almost, you're not going to ever keep up unless you do something.
Right. You know, we've, we've been very aggressive at changing our design standards for those streets. We have, the structure we're putting in the ground today is essentially about twice the structure we've historically, and that's one of the reasons you see the deterioration that you do see right now, which is some historic issues there.
Steve, I do have a question. Mine's more kind of timeframe. So, if this half cent bond would happen to pass with the number of street repairs, intersection repairs, what's your timeframe for getting those completed?
I believe that is a little bit tied by the bond itself, if I understand correctly, but we would, we would work to get the ten to twelve million in the ground within three years.
Within three years. And if...
Because the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to get. So just...
Correct.
The sooner we get it in, the more we're going to get for our dollar.
You're looking at potentially three years to get this work done.
Yes.
Without the bond, how long would this amount of repair take?
Without the bond, none of that work is in our ten-year CIP.
And again, Steve, you said the assessments that you've done, obviously from the map you presented us, this, this scoring or assessment of our, our current infrastructure is not guesswork. We've adopted systems that do the analysis on this, and we're somewhere in the fifties range out of a scaled a hundred of, and conditions. Yeah. Okay. Not a good spot.
Right. But to be fair, we do, we still do have two point nine million each year that would be allocated towards streets. It's not like it's going away or something happened. It's just it's not going to be as aggressive the plan.
Right.
Moving forward. I mean, that's what you're seeing, what you're seeing.
Right. Our CHAF fund, just to kind of answer a question here, now I do want to turn it over to, to Parks, but our CHAF is made up of city highway allocation funds that comes back as a, as a program through our lane miles and, and gas taxes. There is a portion that is also related to vehicle sales, and then we get about a half a million dollars a year in federal buyback dollars. So all that together adds up to, with the annexation, right at about four million. And then Benj, the Benjamin Avenue project will take one point eight for bond payment.
But, the one, is that one?
One point eight.
Payment?
Yes.
For the bond issue, yeah. Any other questions for Steve on the streets plan? Okay. Thank you, Steve. I think we move next then to Nate Powell, our Parks and Rec Director, to talk about Tahazuka improvements and the aquatic center.
I think we move next then to Nate Powell, our Parks and Rec Director, to talk about Tahoe-Zucca improvements and the Aquatic Center.
Mayor and Council, tonight I'll speak to the eight-month process I've been involved in for the past eight months and about improvements at Tahoe-Zucca and also an indoor aquatic center. The Tahoe-Zucca is a master plan. It is, it's got a lot of components in it. I don't know if you want to pull that up, Lyle? There we go. We phased it out into three phases because it is a big project and there's a lot that can be done out there. But this is the long-term plan over quite a long period. Phase one would be the ball field improvements is what I'm calling it at 19,483,000. This would improve all the existing ball fields that we have. It would, we would add locker rooms for umpires and all the athletes, both men's and women's. We would add parking and roadway, as you can see in the, in the map up there. There'd be 1,100 parking spaces, which would accommodate all the facilities that we're proposing and a roadway that connects to First Street. We would add two softball fields to the north. That would be Fields 13 and 12 there that you can see. And that's what's included in phase one. Phase two would be the park improvements, Ball Field 11, the court complex with pickleball, basketball, tennis, any of the court sports. That's where we would put those. And then expanded campground amenities as well. So we would expand our campground to the north, as you can see in the map. Phase three would be the soccer complex. I'm sorry, phase two would be $7 million worth of improvements. And then phase three would be $4,825,000 worth of improvements to the soccer complex and footsall fields. That would be four soccer fields. Two of those would be artificial turf and two footsall fields, which is a small soccer court. The public input process that we've gone through, we did get some input. I'll just run through those. Safer roadways and access to First Street, improved parking, improve existing ball fields and add new ball fields with proper sizing to have tournaments in our community. Improve the backstops, dugouts, bullpens, those kinds of amenities. Improve the spectator areas with ADA access, which we've already done on Fields 1, 2, and 3. We've already started some of those improvements. Add improved comfort stations with umpire, umpire men's and women's locker rooms. And also again, improve the playing surface and level the fields to make them more playable. That's been a concern. That would include the Tahoe. If you want to go to the aquatic center, I can go into that room. And go to the location map. There we go. So we have two locations that were considered in this process. One was Embrace Park, but we ran into some LWCF Land Water Conservation Fund grant problems because that park was developed with those funds and so you have to do outdoor recreation. You can't put an indoor facility on the site without going through a long process with an unknown at the end on whether or not it would get approved. We also needed eight to 10 acres for the facility and the parking. So the second parkland option that we had was Winter Park that did accommodate our size needs and our parking needs that we needed. And that's what is proposed here. It's also across from the high school and the library, which makes it a good location for an indoor aquatic center. What we're proposing is a 54,000 square foot facility at 32,535,000. That does include 15% contingency. Those are the unknowns in the project and another 14% escalation, which is inflation costs that we're dealing with. So the base price is 23 million, but by the time you add all that in, we're up to the 32. We're also proposing a competition pool with spectator seating for 600. Recreation pool with the lazy river and several place features for water-based recreation. The competition pool can be used for recreation as well. You can put, we call it whippets in there and different things for basketball or climbing walls. You know, all those things can be put in that rec pool to expand the recreation. It's not just in our rec pool. Public input during this process, they're looking for a year-round recreation facility, which is something that's needed in our community. A destination pool that has that regional draw and that's what we're presenting today. A large competition pool with enough spectator seating to bring in the local and state swim meets. And then a recreation pool that maximizes our square footage of the facility, which we're doing. And a facility that allows the YMCA to continue their programming, which we don't want to compete with the YMCA. We didn't design a facility to compete with them, but hopefully to enhance their programs and develop that partnership. Improved parking and bike lanes along Third Street was part of the public comment that we heard and we did include that in our map. And also keeping the north playground on the north end of the park, in Winter Park. We're also adding a playground in Warren Cook, just south of this area, next to the library as well. And then also to replace those tennis courts and move those up to Liberty Bell, which is also part of this project. The public engagement process started in January 18, taking this to council and to do a concept design for the Tahoe improvements and the indoor water park. Went through 12 different meetings with steering committees, the individual sports associations and sports groups, the schools in the community, all of our stakeholders. We've had staff with, or subcommittee meetings as well and also brought it to City Council on June 21st work session. And then a couple of public open houses that we've had to date as well. Overall, we had 12 meetings that were reaching out to the community to hear what it is they wanted in these facilities and that's what we're presenting here today. Any questions?
On the 18, 19 million for the first phase of the baseball and softball fields, that includes the infrastructure of the parking lot?
Yep, yep.
That's usually the expensive part. The 600 spectators at the indoor committee or the indoor water park, where they, competition pool, there we go. At the competition pool, that'll seat 600. And if I remember right, Dave Nelson said that that's number three in the state as far as they can facilitate.
Yep. In terms of communities that have this much spectator seating, we would be on the top. The other two are the universities that are higher and this would be that statewide draw to our facility.
Currently, there's, we only had three teams in our meets and by putting this in, we would be able to have 20. And that would be the number of teams and they would also bring spectators, family, friends. That's going to improve our community. I just wanted to get that out there so people understand it's not just being money spent, it's being money made.
Any questions?
I've been asked a couple of questions.
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right. First off, one of the questions, I think more than once I've been asked, not so much the fact that this facility is part of this plan, it's more about what happens afterwards. Like how is this thing going to maintain itself? And people are worried that if it does pass and, or gets voted in November to pass, because it's not getting passed tonight. But in November, when the voters vote to pass it or not pass it, does that mean they're, how are we going to fund operating this thing? And that's legit questions.
Yep. I ran through some numbers.
Before you answer that, Nate, just a second. At the work session this noon, you had, I think it's part of the packet, some notes that laid out. Yeah, but can we put that on the screen by chance or not?
I don't think...
Because it got into expected revenue and things like that.
I can review, I can...
Okay.
Yeah, I can review it.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
So expected revenue, I'll just kind of talk about AquaVenture because that's kind of, gives us a measuring point. AquaVenture has 40,000 visits, you know, over, just over a two-month period. The revenue at AquaVenture is 265,000 and that's excluding concessions. That's just the visits and that average is $6.63 per visit. I'm expecting, I would say about 100,000 visits at the new indoor pool at a minimum. So you're going to set your fees based on an average. And if your average is $10 per visit, you would bring in a million dollars in revenue. And that's where we would fund the majority of the facility. Some of, so I'll go through the expenses. I actually was able to run numbers off of a 25,000 square foot facility to compare to a 50,000 square foot facility. Facility staff, around 550,000. Services like repair and maintenance insurance, another 48,000. Chemicals, operating supplies, about 64,000. Utilities, about 307,000. The total there is 972,000 is what I have for total operating costs. Now, five of the full-time staff that, we'd have six full-time staff in the facility, five of them are already staffed in Parks and Rec. So we're moving over there. So a lot of the additional work that comes on me, I'm not going to hire, we don't need another director. I just take on those things.
So part of that 550,000, or 500,000 budget is already in your budget?
No, the 500 would be additional, would be additional. So this is 972,000 on top of our operating budget for Parks and Rec. And so, but, but five staff would be housed, would be housed there as well. That are, we're currently doing the same, a lot of the same, you know, same things of managing AquaVenture. So we'd be able to delegate those tasks to our, to the staff that we have available to us. So again, if we can reach our goal of 1 million dollars in revenue, we'd be able to cover that 972,000. And this is, you know, on the top end. This is if we're open every day all year long and it's also fully guarded the whole day, which it generally wouldn't have that. There'd be downtime when people are in school and depending on the time of day. Gets busy more after school from 3:00 to 8:00, you know, so we have more guards and you have less guards during the day, so.
Nate, I do have a question. So the indoor facility would be open year-round, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So do you anticipate with it being open year-round that you will lose any revenue from the outside water park?
Not from my experience. I was able to open up an indoor aquatic center in Mitchell in 2018. We did have an outdoor aquatic center as well and it did not have any impact. After COVID, we actually went up on our outdoor pool, so it, we didn't have any troubles having a new indoor aquatic center in our community. And the business planners that are, that work in the industry will tell you, will tell you that upfront, that it doesn't have an impact because the clientele is just different for, during the summertime. People that want to be outside and want to be in the sun, that's where they go swimming. And those that can't or don't want to go into the indoor pool.
Nick, I'm glad you brought that up because that, that was my impression as well. There's two different customer sets here.
Yep.
And one we're not seeing right now.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
We, we talked a little bit about that at noon as well. The opportunity in this, given that it's, would be the only facility of its kind, both the competition pool and the aquatics rec part of it. There's, there's not anything like this anywhere close. Is that correct?
We, we've tried to visit everything locally. Sioux Falls would be the closest that I know. We looked at pools in similar-sized communities in Gillette, Wyoming and Montrose, Colorado. But other than that, we just, we just can't find anything in the region that is of this size.
Like I said earlier today, that, taking somewhat of a new approach in Parks and Rec, this business management side of it, again, not historically a lot of emphasis on that within some of the projects we've done. But that's at least partly what brought Nate here. He's got a lot of experience in managing projects like those, projects that have been successful in other places, projects that have proven themselves out in terms of both being helpful to enhance quality of life in a place, but also attract visitors and bring new money into the community.
I do want to mention that the costs I gave you are today's dollars, not two years from now, so it would change.
Any other questions for Nate? Sure. I think that's probably a good segue if there's not any further council questions for Nate.
Nate, how many, how many racing lanes or competition lanes would there be? Because this is a 25 yard by 20 meter. I got this backwards.
Yeah. This is the 12 lane. 11, I'm sorry, 11 lanes.
Okay. And that doubles from what they currently are using?
I don't know what they... And my 100,000 visits is check-ins in the facility. Economic development is going to talk about visitors, which is a little bit different.
Any other questions for Nate? Hey, Councilman Jackson, your question was about local economic impact. And right on, right before us, recently, an analysis was completed by NPPD and representing NPPD is Nikul Salat.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So our team at Nebraska Public Power District, I'm our Economic Development Manager at NPPD and our team was recently, we prepare economic impact assessments on a requested basis. Dr. Melissa Trueblood is our economist on our team at NPPD and uses M-Plan modeling software to prepare the studies and assessments. M-Plan consists of 21 economic and demographic variables and over 500 industrial sectors for each of the more than 3,000 counties in the United States. These impact assessments are typically done when a business is looking at coming into a community or maybe when a company is wanting to expand and wanting to see what are those economic impacts that the project will have on a community. However, municipalities, economic development organizations, community groups sometimes use this type of information to help in their decision-making. In the last several years, we've taken on these types of requests for projects that would be considered public projects or quality of living projects as communities look to build and design communities that will more importantly attract and retain residents, but also help in pulling those outside dollars to help aid the local economy. So in plan modeling, you all have a copy of the report, but it generates economic multipliers. And these multipliers are then used to estimate the secondary and total impacts. For this assessment, it was to look at projected visitor spending with the expanded ballpark and aquatic center facilities. We did not take into account any of the potential economic impact on what the additional campground spots at Tahoe-Zucca would have. With the park being the only campgrounds located within the city of Norfolk, those spots are filled up all the time. So there's additional revenue and impact to be gained from that. The study unfortunately does not also include the soccer field improvements and the potential for those tournaments, participants and spectators, nor the pickleball fields or courts with those tournaments and spectators that could pull that into. So a similar assessment could be ran and also combined with these numbers to be available at a future date. So for this particular modeling, Dr. Trueblood utilized data from the Norfolk Area Visitors Bureau, from existing data, from tournaments that are already held here. Also the opportunity that a community the size of Norfolk could have with bringing additional tournaments, new tournaments into the community that would bring new teams and new visitors in, utilizing also the sports tourism index. So we looked at the impact these proposed improvements and projects would have. And some of the highlights from that study include four points, and these are annual impacts. impacts, so 4.7 million in total visitor spending. So this is estimated direct spending from visitors coming into Norfolk that these projects could have on the community. 32,000 participants and spectators for the ballpark and aquatic facilities based on the types and number of tournaments that the community would be able to attract. 30,000 visitors for the aquatic center, a potential of 107 jobs created, both from a direct and a secondary impact, and up to 12 million annually impact of, of total visitor spending. So this is direct from the visitors coming in, but then that secondary spending of those dollars then being kind of turned over in the community. For example, this could include, you know, increases and purchases of additional food from restaurants as, as more visitors come in and more, you know, sales are being had. Just a couple of notes that we did take a look at the, we looked at estimates of the percentage of participants and spectators for the ballpark. We used a number of, we used 20% of those visitors would be from the immediate Norfolk area. Outside immediate, but less than 50 miles, we used 20%. And then greater than 50 miles, it was 60%. That was just on the, the ballpark facilities themselves. On the aquatic center, we used about 70% of that being the Norfolk area itself, with 30% of those visitors being divided amongst the less than 50 and the greater than 50 mile radius from Norfolk. Any questions?
Nikul, once again, what was the, what was the dollar impact?
So 4.7 million annually, just from the direct visitors themselves, but that combined from that secondary impact, that would be 12 million from direct and secondary.
I mean, in total?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Great, thank you.
Okay, I think we've reached the point where we do want to allow for public input. And I laid out those ground rules earlier, but once again, one opportunity to sleep, to speak, five minute time limit and you will be guided as to that time by our city clerk, Brianna, through the use of the yellow and red cards. So anyone wishing to offer input can do so now. If you'd start by giving us your name and then signing that form in front of you, please.
Hi, my name is Emmett Haake and I'm on the Norfolk Panthers Swim Team. Swimming is a rapidly growing sport in Nebraska, but our team is severely limited in what we can do by our facility. The YMCA has six lanes and on a busy day, we can be crammed in 10 to 15 swimmers a lane, you know, which really limits our ability to grow as a team. We're incredibly grateful to the YMCA for allowing us to use their pool and they have a bunch of great programs other than our swim team, one of which is Aquasize. For, it's a way for elderly people to get a really good workout in, in a low-impact sport. But the elderly really like the pool incredibly warm and the water temperature does not change very quickly. So that will leave us actually swimming in, you know, water that is much higher than the safety, well, than USA Swimming defines as safe for swimming. Our team has a very bright future. We have a ton of incredibly fast swimmers that are going to be joining high school swim team in the next couple of years. And this aquatic center can make Norfolk known for having a very competitive and fast swim team. In addition to this, the aquatic center will be able to host numerous meets, which will bring lots of people from all over Nebraska, stay in Norfolk hotels and support Norfolk businesses. Norfolk is a growing town and we need to be willing to invest in ourselves. This facility will draw new families to Norfolk and make our town a better place to live. I see no reason not to put this up on the ballot and allow people to vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Emmett. Anyone else wishing to comment?
Evening.
Mayor and City Council, my name is Robyn Bierman and I am a lifelong resident of Norfolk. My husband and I now live here with our four young boys. So as a student of Norfolk Public Schools, I grew up as a member of the AquaJet Swim Team and also as a competitor on the Norfolk Senior High Swim Team. Just a little background. While those times were 20 to 30 years ago, the swim team still faced the same challenges that they're facing today. You've kind of heard some of those already. Just to reiterate that, we are facing limited practice times, limited pool space, very crowded practices, a disadvantage when hosting swim meets, as you guys have already heard. Also, all of that kind of impacted by the demands on the YMCA to accommodate their members and the programming that they have. Fast forward 20 years from when I was on the swim team, now as a mom of four, three of which are currently on swim team and also a part-time coach for the AquaJets, we are still facing all those same challenges. It seems like not much has changed in those 20 years. And we are to the point, as you heard earlier today, where we are turning kids away from practices from our club, not allowing for growth due to that limited space and overcrowding in our pool. I, again, we feel like there's so much potential in the program, there's so many swimmers that want to try it, we want to give them the opportunity to compete, we're just lacking some of those ways to do that safely. One thing I do want to touch on is the sport of swimming provides kind of a unique opportunity to the youth in our community. Swimming is a sport in which every single child can participate. Unlike some other team sports, basketball, football, where there's a limited number on the team, swim team is one that will take all, all kids, everyone. We're willing to train them regardless of their ability, help them develop in their abilities, assuming we have the facility to accommodate that. One other point that I think of when I'm hearing all this information is just the missed economic opportunities that Norfolk could face by not offering this amenity. In a way, I think of this project as a partnership or counterpart to AquaVenture. And I hear a lot of arguments in our community, not a lot, a few arguments in our community of people that say the water park is the biggest waste of money that Norfolk could have spent. And I would question them and say, have you been to the water park on any given day in the summer? Because I have, I'm there a lot with my kids and it's busy regardless of the weather. The economic impact of this project comes in many forms, from the AquaVenture project, I apologize. Not only am I paying the admission to get in, as mentioned, I'm paying for those snacks while I'm there and on the way home inevitably my kids are wanting to stop at Tasty Treat, Burger King, Dairy Queen, all those types of things. I also have friends that drive here from out of town. I personally have friends from O'Neil, from Elgin, from Plainview, from Osmond, from Wausau, that they come to Norfolk to the water park. And what they say to me is, it's so great that we don't have to drive to Omaha to do the fun activities that we want to do with our family. And I feel the same for my own family as far as I don't have to drive to Omaha or to Yankton, pay for a hotel wherever I'm at to take my kids to some of these facilities that they want to use as a fun opportunity, not just the competition that we've been talking about. After attending today's working meeting, I have heard more concerns about this project in regards to the increased sales tax. And first of all, with that, I really just want to say thank you, thank you to the people of Norfolk who have proposed and supported this type of project in the past. The projects that come to mind for me are the library and the, like I mentioned, AquaVenture. Well, I understand that the tax implemented on those isn't exactly the same. My understanding is that it is similar in many ways. And with that, both of those projects have greatly improved our community. So again, just want to thank the people here in this room, you on, on the council most likely either for being up here or for voting on it at that time, pursuing those projects and taking the risks for our community to enjoy and specifically for my family to enjoy. It is the reason that we chose to move our family back to this town because of what it has to offer. I believe that all of these projects mentioned today go hand in hand as they benefit our community. And also, as mentioned today, they are all far behind for a community of our size. So I hope that they will be considered as one motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Robyn.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeremy Warner. I currently have two daughters who play for the Kelly's Fast Pitch Organization and I'm also their board president. The improvements at Tahoe with the softball fields will allow us to continue to grow softball in the local area by providing us with top-notch facilities. The improvements to the current facilities are much needed. If you go out there anytime during the summer, the parking lots are full and the fields are all full of kids, whether it be baseball, softball, or the slow pitch recreation league that also participates out there. At times, we have to really plan our practice, field availability and schedule games months in advance to make sure that we have field availability. This would be a huge boost and would allow us to grow even more. It would put Norfolk softball on the map in the state of Nebraska. It would give us the ability to host 40 to 50 team tournaments. We'd be able to make bids for league districts and possibly even a state tournament. Those tournaments would be a huge boost to Norfolk economy in terms of hotel rooms, restaurants and other retail. I strongly urge the city to consider this in the vote and get it on the ballot because if we build it, they will come. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Jeremy, while you're still up here, you mentioned this, the, the existing facilities as they are and the limitations that places on us as a community recruiting tournaments and events. Can you expand on that a little bit? What do you think, being in the position that you are, really is the potential to get new competitions here and new events and bring teams to want to enjoy a facility like this compared to what it is today?
Sure. What we have today is definitely showing its age with restroom availability of restrooms. The two middle fields there, field four and five are existing, there's, there's no concessions or bathroom at that facility and those are our game fields currently. We field teams from the eight and under group all the way up to 18 and under. You know, it's, it's hard for little girls to always get to the bathroom and they have to run all the way over to the field sixes restroom facility over there. Also for tournaments, we utilize fields four and five as well. Again, there's no concessions over there, so the concessions has to go from the main complex, which is one, two and three, which is existing today. It's quite a bit of a walk to get over there. A lot of the surfaces in between fields are hilly out there, so there's not a lot of room to warm up for teams that come and come to the tournaments. With the plan that's proposed, my understanding is the, the new baseball field six, seven and eight would be a dirt infield, so that would allow softball and baseball. So with that considered, we could have 12 fields for a tournament instead of the existing five. So that would open up, you know, the 40 to 50 plus tournaments. You try to run that many teams on the, on the five fields that we have and it's tough. It's tough.
Great, that helps. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make comment?
Jim McKenzie, 1412 Longhorn Drive. I won't bore you with the same stuff that I said earlier, I just wanted to kind of clarify some things from the, the noon work session. I, I mentioned that a 20-year sales tax increase would be the maximum the city could impose and we'd be paying for it for 20 years for a whole generation, but I mentioned that earlier, and I said that would put the city in a tough financial position. And Josh mentioned that the city's in great financial condition, maybe better, better than ever. If that's true, then why are you asking for a sales tax increase for 20 years to pay for basic street repairs or police facilities? If we're flush with cash, why can't we just pay for those? So I challenge that, that we are not in a great financial condition. We've spent everything that we have and now we're saying we need more taxes just to pay for street repairs. Number two, Nate's projection of 100,000 visitors per year seems, I would say, fairly optimistic. If the indoor aquatic center opened for 365 days per year, that'd be 274 visits per day, every day, including when kids are in school and have extracurricular activities. Is that possible? I don't know. That, that seems pretty high. And at a rate of $10 per visitor, that seems pretty steep. Are we really going to be able to charge $10 per visitor? Are they really going to pay that rate? What if it's $5 per visitor? What if it's 50,000 visitors per year? Your revenue goes from a million to 250,000. Now you've got a $750,000 deficit to make up. You don't have any more sales tax because you've, you maxed out, so now you're at a property tax increase to pay for that deficit. You're shaking your head, Frank, but those are numbers. Nate also stated that it'll only take one full-time lifeguard for the indoor aquatic center. If you're going to have a second pool open, if you got, you got two pools, if you're going to have both those pools open, and if you're going to have an open from 6:00 AM for lap swimmers, that's been talked about, so you open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week, that's 98 hours a week. Let's assume that you cut that down to 80 hours of working time per week. That's 80 hours per week, you're going to need four full-time lifeguards, not one. So I'm just asking you to challenge this stuff a little bit and say, is this possible? Are we really going to accomplish this? And if we come back in a couple of years and all of a sudden you're having to pony up a whole bunch more money, we didn't do our job. And lastly, Rob stated that I should take up my property tax increase with the county assessor instead of the city. Well, I'd like to explain how property taxes work. The assessor provides the city with an estimate of property valuations for the fiscal year. The city then knows how much revenue they will receive and if they keep the levy the same as last year, then they reap the increased revenue of the valuation increase or they can set a reasonable spending limit in their budget and lower the levy as the other political subdivisions have done. The city has chosen not only to keep the levy the same in the past several years, but also increase the city levy. So if your property valuation goes up 15% in a given year, your property taxes go up even more than 15% in a given year. It has risen at a much greater rate than the cost of living and people's wages. The county has nothing to do with the city property taxes going up. It only, it's only the city that controls this. That is why the city portion of my property taxes have risen 115% from 2013 to 2021, significantly faster than any other political subdivision, including the college, the schools and the county. Finally, people on a fixed income or living paycheck to paycheck simply cannot afford a new tax and ever-increasing city property taxes. They shouldn't be required to give up paying for bare necessities for a $50 to $70 million worth of rec projects, depending on how much you decide to do. It's, it's a tremendous burden. I understand these people's passion, I get it, it's what they love to do, I understand that, but there are limits on what we can afford and I just ask you to consider that. And if this goes forward, I would ask that you let the voters have a choice of voting on which projects they wish to approve and which they do not. That's a basic, giving the citizens the right to choose. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else wishing to comment?
I didn't prepare anything, but I'm Roger Borkman. I'm a friend of Norfolk softball. We have a lot of people in this room today, I think that are friends of Norfolk softball. And I, I wanted to just, first of all, thank you for what you've done so far out there in the fields. in the fields. I was very concerned for several years about the liability out there walking on crushed pieces of concrete. We've got it now where at least our grandmas can walk up there and watch a game. First of all, the facilities that we have out there are a beautiful setting. I've heard that from so many people. We've had teams come up, and they just love the setting. The only thing that we really, really don't like is the restroom facilities. I mean, that is, have any of you been in there lately? I found out from my daughter-in-law that in order to close the door in the, I didn't go in there. My daughter-in-law said you have to back in, spread across the stool, then close the door, then sit down. All right, that can be fine. There's room in there for four people, but when we have busloads of players come to our town for the college or for the high school, we're competing with cities of our own size. And they look at our facility and they go like, "Great-looking field, but what have you got here for restrooms?" That's going to have to be repaired regardless of the issue. My contention is that we need to upgrade the ballparks, and we need to do it as quickly as possible because it is an embarrassment when you go out there and you see some of the fields and complexes that we go to and play. Cities our size are doing things. They are growing, and they are making the fields out there comfortable for spectators. We need to step it up. And I'd just like to see a show of hands in here of how many softball people we have. Raise your hand if you'd like to see, okay. There was four. I'm not very good at counting. And also, I'd like to thank the young man that spoke from the high school swim team. Our future's in good shape, I think. That's very, very proud of them. We need these facilities to keep our youth competitive throughout the state. We are known in Norfolk as very competitive in our athletic and recreational adventures, and I'm hoping that we put it on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Mayor Mooney and City Council members. My name is Dr. Jamie Jo Thompson, and I am the superintendent of Norfolk Public Schools. Although the city is not looking at building these recreation facilities for Norfolk Public Schools, our administrators and coaches have been working with your city administrators throughout the planning process, and we are very supportive of the proposed recreation plan. In addition to the economic impact these would have on our community, they would also be very beneficial to our public and private schools, which have combined swimming and softball teams. Our schools cannot afford to build softball facilities or a competition swimming pool without a bond issue, which would increase patrons' property taxes. Therefore, we are looking forward to the possibility of entering into a cooperative partnership agreement with the city to use these facilities for an appropriate fee, which would assist the city's increased operation costs. We are already partnering with the city for softball and contributed half of the cost for the concrete improvements at Tahoe Zuka this summer. That concrete helped alleviate ADA accessibility concerns, but we do need additional enhancements and improvements, such as locker rooms and restrooms, in order to have respectable facilities. And although we have partnered with the YMCA for swimming for many years, and we are very appreciative of that partnership, the new city pool would be better suited to our program needs, and it would free up time and space for the Y to hold more aquatics fitness classes, swimming lessons, and lap swimming lessons. Our NPS Finance and Facilities Committee has discussed this many times, and they see many advantages to these facility upgrades and look forward to expanding our partnership with the city.
Thank you, Jamie Jo. And I appreciate the opportunity we had the other day to discuss potential creative partnerships to make this work for everybody. And at the noon work session, Mr. Nelson was here, and we talked about just how strong Norfolk's swimming programs are, even given some of the limitations with facilities right now. And personally, I'm excited to see what could happen if this would go through and how that strengthens existing programs and recruits more kids to our youth sports programs. So I appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to make comment? Good evening.
Good evening, Councils. See, council members. My name's Brenda Test. I've lived in town approximately over, close to thirty years. I've seen a lot of things go on, and I've been here tonight listening to all this, and I have a few comments that I would like to make. I mean, being in town for thirty years, why now for all the street improvements? We've had time to work on this, and now you're asking us to add another half-cent sales tax to work on these streets, when over time, we could have been working on these. I guess Mr. Powell mentioned that the swimming complex, that you've looked at other areas, but you're putting it in a residential area. And we all know parking around the high school area. People are going to park in that residential area, and then those people that live there are going to be upset, and they're going to be calling law enforcement because somebody's blocking their driveway or something. And then there's an event at the high school, where we know now when there's events at the high school, parking is tough. I mean, I've gone there personally to reserve a parking spot for somebody coming into town to attend a concert or something, so they have a spot to park because they're of the elderly age and they don't want to walk across the street or three blocks away. And also, I know the city's used that area to dump the snow during the wintertime. So now where is that snow going to be dumped? Have we found another location for that? I understand all these teams, and I have nothing against all these sporting teams that use Tahoe Zuka Park, but are they going to help contribute to the cost? I know they're bringing in the teams, and they're going to spend money, but what about the upkeep? I mean, you're requiring this, as a city, as us as taxpayers, to help with that upkeep also and the hiring of the manpower. You've gone back saying only one lifeguard needed. My understanding was, and talking to some people from the Aqua Venture, that there was a possibly shortage of lifeguards. They were going around and asking people from last year that worked to come back because they didn't have enough people. Is that going to happen at this new indoor aquatic center? And I understand that camping fees, are they going to be increased? Because I've had campers tell me this is the cheapest place around to camp. If we're going to raise fees, that would help offset some of these costs also. I guess, you know, we keep talking about a recession, and you're asking us, as taxpayers, to spend an extra half percent. Well, think of those people that are tight with their budgets now. You're just asking now it's going to be a little bit tighter with this half percent sales tax increase. And so I'm asking the city that you put each one of these separately on the ballot and let the taxpayers choose. And also, Mr. Wartman mentioned about the restrooms. I haven't been in them out there for twenty-five years, but if you go into some businesses now, you do have to back in to shut the door and to get in there and to shut the door to sit down. So it's just not the restrooms at Tahoe Zuka. It's restrooms in businesses in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comment?
Dave Nelson. I talked a little bit at the noon meeting, but I just wanted to put a couple more points across just for everybody to look at. I want to thank the council for looking towards the future. I wear a lot of hats. I know most people in the community probably recognize me as a swim coach, but my most important hat is a father, and I'm looking for my kids. What is this town going to provide? And for, more for the future, because what you're looking at here is something that is more than five years. This is something that's twenty to thirty to forty. I'm looking for, God willing, my future grandkids for something that they can partake in this community. And for, God willing, if I'm forty-three years from now, my eightieth-year-old body can use a facility to move around. I do want to mention a couple things that, you know, as a father of three, there are some things we really enjoy in this town. Aqua Venture that was mentioned, the public library, and when it comes to the winter, it is limited with things for recreation. Thank goodness for the YMCA because that's one of the options that comes to my mind. The city of Scotts Bluff is also looking at a bond sales tax for an indoor facility because they did have two indoor pools until 2018. Their city pool from back in the nineteen-sixties had to be shut down, and they realized the YMCA pool wasn't enough. And so they're also looking towards something like this. But I think these facilities, and not just the swimming pool, we have an amazing softball program, and we have some great softball and baseball people here. And I know over here I have swimmers as well. I don't know how many of you can raise your hand that are a part of the swim team, former parents or alumni. I think it's more than four, but softball, I know there was more than four. You know, I think just providing something for our youth is important, something for safety for our youth, for some recreational opportunities at reasonable cost. This will help for the wellness of our citizens, and also it'll grow our local economy with bringing people into town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else wishing to make comment?
My name's Jared Mills. I'm the athletic director at Northeast Community College. First, thank you. Thank you for your work the past year as this is a big step in making Norfolk a truly great city. We are very supportive of the proposed improvements to elevate our student-athlete experience, as we have some here with us tonight. We have partnered with the city recently to improve Memorial Baseball Field as well. I can tell you firsthand with having these fields, we'll be able to showcase top-tier championship-level fields to future student-athletes as recruits. We can have more tournaments locally and regionally and maybe even possibly host a national tournament someday. These places will truly make Norfolk a destination city, so thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Anyone else wishing to make comment? Okay.
Hi. My name is Olivia Mateo. I was here for the noon meeting. Again, I just want to reiterate that nobody's against the, all these proposals. However, we need to prioritize what we're going to spend money on. And it's great that there have been working groups that have been involved in the Tahoe Zuka, especially the indoor facility, swimming facility. The rest of the citizens of Norfolk have not had a chance to get their opinions or their input in these working groups. I would like to, for you to reconsider putting it as a separate ballot for everyone to be able to actually consider it, analyze it for themselves. You just said that there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that will be available for the city council projects, priority projects that they want to do. Maybe if you can consider something, some improvements to Tahoe Zuka, you know, or I know you can't do the aquatic without a complete bond because it's a very big and expensive project. But we need to focus on the safety of the community, which is, you know, we need to ensure that our police force is supported, that our juvenile offenders or juveniles that end up in the police stations are safe. City attorneys have extra space in there, you know, for everybody that needs your services. Also, in addition to that safety concerns, you have the streets that are needed to be, that need to be worked on. I do agree with that person that said, you know, we should have been maintaining our streets every year based on the taxes or whatever, however money you get, but now we really need to fix them, not only for our students, the children that travel there. You know, if we want to attract people to come to our cities to enjoy the Tahoe Zuka Park and the Aqua Venture and the indoor pools, all these buses need to have good city streets. And if you don't have that, you know, you're going to have accidents, and then you need police force and firefighters and all that stuff. You know, I mean, right now, we, with this inflation, recession, whatever's going on with our increasing necessities, we need to prioritize our projects, and we need to find other places to find money besides increasing taxes on people that probably are living paycheck to paycheck and that won't be able to afford to go to an indoor facility that would charge ten bucks or more per visit. So for a family of four, or at least a husband and wife, it'd be twenty dollars. That's probably milk and bread for the whole week. So, you know, we just need to make sure that the citizens of Norfolk, not just the working group and the specific groups that have been in these sessions, you know, let the peoples of Norfolk put their vote out there. So, you know, maybe, you know, if one facility does not get the bond, maybe get it next year, you know. We gotta, we gotta be good stewards of our money. We don't want to kill our people here just to get future visitors. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, I'm Doug Barrett. I'm a Ward Two voter. I just want to urge the council to put this forward as one motion and not dibby it up. As we know, one will not work, one might not get it. It seems to, all three projects have a symbiotic relationship. They all work without each other. They won't work. I mean, we get our pool, we need the police to come and make sure we're safe at our events. We need roads that work. It needs to all happen at once and not, not piecemeal. It's a big project, but I think it'll be great for Norfolk. We love Norfolk. Moved here about three years ago, and it's just wonderful. We think it's great. We think this will be, even, make it even better. But you got to do all three together. You can't have one without the other. Our kids are adorable. We could put puppies in their hands and go to every polling place and get our pool, but if we don't have the police, it's not worth it. We don't have roads, it's not worth it. So I would urge you all to put this all on the ballot together. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
My name's Jeff Gallion. I'm a voter from Ward Two. I'm speaking in support of the resolution, in particular, the indoor aquatic center. You've heard a lot, so I'm going to hit on a few things that I've going to hit on a few things that I've learned or are things that I know from my experience. One is, in preparation for this and looking at this, I found a study completed by a professor at Eastern Kentucky University. And they looked at five water parks, two of which were municipal owned, indoor water parks, and did 1014 surveys from those water parks. Had about 80% compliance with their surveys. About everybody they asked did it. And got results of what those people spent. And one thing that, that did not surprise me, but I thought was, was relevant to you, was concessions at the park. And those, those numbers were between $3.58 and $9.52 per visitor per day. Now, obviously, those aren't, those are gross revenue. That's not net to the city. But we use the high end of our visitor numbers that Mr. Powell has presented to us. That's $952,000 revenue a year from concessions. That same study indicated that those people stated that they spent between $21.11 and $64.85 per visitor per day in the city. So, that means on top of the 3.50 to 9.50, they spent concessions on top of their admission. They then went out and spent between $12.41 and $38.05 at the local bar restaurant. Casey's getting gas. Obviously, some people might get a hotel room and brings that average up. But they're big numbers. I'd also like to speak to you from, from the aspect, I own a bar and restaurant in Lincoln. And what we have seen is that as, as the sports teams do well or do poorly, the business changes dramatically. And you, without adequate facilities, we've, we've heard the, the athletic director from Northeast speak to this. We've heard about the swim facilities. Without adequate facilities, it's tough to put your best teams forward. And those best teams are economic drivers. Think back to our national or our state championship basketball team. We packed the gym every night. Those people went out and spent money. Those things, those things are important, I think. And along those lines, I'd like to point out, we have a group of seventh and eighth grade girls, swimmers, that are just tremendous. There is a championship meet at the end of the swim season and that is for the state of Nebraska and Western Iowa. And these girls won 10 of 20 events by my count. They had another nine second, third or fourth place finishes. They won three of four relays against the best swim teams in Omaha, Lincoln, Council Bluffs and Sioux City. So, these girls are out of this world in their training and, and performing at a junior high facility essentially compared to what, what we have now. So, that, you know, I, I don't think we're doing our best for, for those things like that. And I think that will drive growth. I would support what Mr. Barrett said. I think all of these are related. And I think how they're related is growth. The rec opportunities create growth. The roads are important to growth. We have to have the public safety aspect because of past and future growth. I think they're all related. I think they need to be considered together. And I hope that you allow the voters to consider them in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else wishing to comment? If not, I think we will close that portion of public input and go to council for discussion or any remaining questions they might have.
Well, to start this off, I am in support of all these projects. They're all great assets for Norfolk. And I appreciate everyone's hard work on these projects. I guess for me, if we were to vote this down today as not a bundle, is there any time for us to meet again to separate these issues? And I think that's an important question because there's a lot of questions with design. And also, we have responsibility to our constituents who, for me, have reached out overwhelmingly against this. So, even though I might be in support of these projects and these, and these great, you know, projects for our community, it's hard for me to continually hear the overwhelming dismay for this from the Ward Four constituents. And, you know, separating the two parks and rec, the aquatic park with streets and PD makes a lot of sense to me. The PD is in dire need of, of space. Their dispatch center has taken over a ton of their space and public safety is extremely important. So, I think, for me, the, the scary part is if this gets voted down in November, what happens to the PD? You know, public safety happens to our streets. As much as I want to support all of them together, I think the right decision is to split these up. And I think with public safety and streets on one and the parks and rec and what aquatics on the other, I think we have a good turnout today that shows that maybe both will pass. It's a possibility. And so, I guess, for me, my question is, and I don't really know all the answers to everything, but if the county commissioners are meeting tomorrow and we table this or decide to remeet again on this, on breaking this down into separate items, is there enough time?
Let me, I appreciate that, Councilman. I'll try to respond as best I can, both process wise and give my personal feeling on that. Staff can weigh in if they, if they choose. Process wise, I think it would be difficult at best at this point to try to do that. There is a state law requirement that anything that goes to voters in this regard has to be approved by council by the end of August, right? Is it date specific? August 31st?
It's due to the Madison County clerk by September 1st.
Okay. All right. And so, I did want to say something before all the young people leave. I do appreciate, I'm going to divert here a little bit. I very much appreciate the public participation shown here tonight. I think it's one of the very few times we've seen the council chambers full in general. I'm venturing to guess that it's probably the most youth we've had in attendance at a council meeting ever. And that brings me hope. I heard excitement. I heard about opportunity. I heard about hope. And I think that's the goal of what we're trying to do up here as a community, that bring hope and enthusiasm for the future. And I heard, I think Emmett say it best, that in order to do that, we really have to be serious about investing in ourselves as a community. And through a lot of the things that we've done over the last few years, that's what we've tried to do. Because we want to retain you folks, our young people. We want to be a community that's attractive to newcomers and welcome new people. And we have to do that. There's not much of a choice. If we don't do those things, we're not a very strong community and going into the future. And our population starts to dwindle. And I think that's just the reality of things. So, thank you for caring enough to be here tonight and to express your opinions and to participate in this process. I just want to say.
It's too late to give one comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Thank you for listening and for inviting comments. My name is Sharon Hartorn. And one of the things that I feel like has come up is, is this extravagant? You know, is this necessary? Is it extravagant? And is it worth putting an extra tax on? And if my math is correct, if I were to spend $100, how much, how much would half of a percent be? Anybody?
50 cents.
50 cents, okay. And I have been many times in my life, I got married in medical school, had my first child while my husband was in medical school. We were missionaries for eight years in Africa. We've been many, many times where we have penny pinched. And I understand the hardship of being stressed about having enough money to buy groceries for my family with four kids. And it is very stressful and I understand that. And I want to empathize with people who are in that situation. But I do feel like 50 cents on, if I can afford $100, I can probably afford 50 cents. And also, if I can't afford the extra tax to go out to eat, then I can't afford to go out to eat. And those are the choices our family has made. When we are in places where we couldn't afford to go out to eat, we didn't go out to eat. And so, we ate things that we could afford to eat and we didn't spend the extra money to go out to eat. And if we couldn't afford to take our family to a water park, we didn't. You know, we found other free, the splash park at the Y and other free amenities that our community provides. The parks, the parks are all free. You could go to any park for free. And so, our family has chosen almost all of the time to do things that do not cost money, to provide entertainment for our family. And I do believe that the, the facilities that we provide do help our police department to keep the crime down. So, when we have kids who can swim for free on the high school swim team or dive for free or play softball for free or golf for free, these are opportunities, any other sport of course as well. But these are opportunities for kids to participate in sports that are free and helps keep the crime down and kids out of juvenile detention center. And so, I think it's great that our community is, is prioritizing this. And I appreciate your efforts to put this all together, but to improve our city as a whole, to improve our community and to bring and attract people who will spend the money, who will spend the half percent to help our community improve. Because it will bring in a lot of people from outside that will spend the money with the extra half percent that will improve our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I am so happy you brought up the math question because I too struggle with math at times. As a matter of fact, I took a little time today and I've had a lot of people explain to me how the city was going to fund this and very few of them actually hit the nail on the head. It was property tax. It was, you know, this, that or the other. The fact of the matter is, it's a one half of 1% sales tax. And so, I made a, channeled my way back to high school, okay, and I made a poster today that Candace is going to put up over here so that, so that everybody can make sure that we know what the math's going to be. And it certainly is, on a $100 expenditure, one half of 1% is 50 cents. Now, you can all do the math. I did the math on a couple of other things. And one of the things I found out is if I go downtown of an evening and have, let's say I have two $3 beers, which I've been known to do, that is 3 cents. And I'm not going to let that stand in my way of having those two Frosty Cool Coors Lights on occasion. I'm also very happy that you brought up folks coming in from out of town. We are a hub and we service, not service, but we're fortunate enough to have, whoever wants to put a number on, 17 to 22 counties worth of people that come to our community. And they do that because we provide things, opportunities that their communities cannot afford to do. And so, they drive in here and they spend, they get charged the same tax that we get charged. So, it would be impossible to do. But if you wanted to take a look at that one half of 1% and you parse that down with the folks that come in and those, from those 17, 22 counties, the one half of 1% goes down because the city of Norfolk, the citizens of Norfolk are not paying that whole tab. But we are setting ourselves up for the future. And one of the big debates we've had around here for the last couple of years is how do we get people in that 28 to 35 year old range to move back to our community, bring their children with them, raise them here, help grow this community? And I can tell you that without proper amenities, without public safety, without good streets, those people aren't going to come back here because they're not going to see a future. They're going to see a past. And I think that we certainly, for our children and their children, we certainly deserve a future for those people. And that is why, for 50 cents out of $100, I wouldn't split this thing up for the world. I would gladly pay that any day of the week.
I think that's well said, Councilman. I just want to finish my thought from before to Councilman McCarthy's question. I'm going to answer it two ways, both process and practice wise. Process, I think it'd be difficult at best. This has been packaged together after almost going back a year on public input sessions, as Nate said, you know, a dozen different public input sessions, half a dozen of those open to the public. These ideas weren't, weren't pulled out of thin air. They were all, all components of this were identified as community needs. And I think staff did a really good job tonight of demonstrating that, demonstrating the process that was involved in bringing us the plans, the design plans and the projected costs. And I think it's our responsibility as a council now that that work has been done based on identified community needs to, as a council, simply tonight, decide on whether we want to put that forward to voters. The vote tonight is not whether we do all of this. It's whether the voters get to decide whether we do all this. And I think that's only appropriate. And the funding source that was identified for this, local option sales tax, I have a list here of more than 30 communities across the state that are utilizing local option sales tax right now for special projects as we're proposing to do here. Because they've found that to be a reasonable way to access the funding needed to invest in ourselves. There was an assertion here that, you know, because the city's in good fiscal position, why can't we just pay cash for it? Well, first off, we are in a good fiscal position when you look at our beginning fund balance, our emergency reserves. That's because of growth. Most of our city revenues come from sales tax revenues. And our city has grown. More people are living here. More people are spending money here. That's, that means we have more money to improve city services. But as, if you remember the discussion with Chief Miller, our divisions don't have the capacity year to year in their operating budgets to pay for special projects like these. And that's why we've packaged this together to leverage bond issue rates. I think that brings another fiscal argument. If you tried to split all this apart, you wouldn't be leveraging the bonding authority in a way that makes the most fiscal sense to get the biggest bang for your buck. So, those are some of the reasons, I think, that both process wise, extremely difficult to change course now on this. And secondly, practice, I think it's bad practice. I don't think it makes sense. I agree with testimony that was given before that these things work together because they help us support a quality of life that we're trying to achieve in Norfolk and that we're trying to be known for. And that we present to our youth for that hope that they can someday see themselves staying here and living here and having their own children here.
I'm not against any of these, obviously. I think they're all great. I would use them. I'm trying to respond to the constituents of Ward Four who have reached out for the last two weeks against this. So, I guess my question is, there's really no point to vote no on this tonight because it won't make a difference. I guess I'm not trying to, I'm just, you know, I'm just asking. I mean, our time is short, correct? So, we really have, we're here just to decide for?
You know, my response to that is I would have hoped that people, again, when it started being talked about in public in January and throughout the year, that, that questions like that would have been presented then. But I don't think we heard that ground swell of concern because as you see from who showed up tonight, there's a lot of people who support this. You might, yeah, that's part of the community. That's part of having a full and fair process of discussing these things. Everybody has their opinions. We heard a lot tonight from people who support this and think that this is a sound and reasonable investment in our future.
You know, if I can, I would like to just, you know, this isn't an easy decision that I think any of us are going to take lightly up here. But we're here for our next generation. We're here for the future. And, you know, if we can see what's going, the potential that this has, whether it be public service, streets, new fields, new water feature, whatever it may be, I mean, we got to remember we gotta remember that this is, maybe not, it may not fit your fancy today, but it will attract and it will keep my children here. I mean, and, and that's, and that's our next future, is that we have to, we have to leave this place better than what we received, and I think many of you would agree to that. And by doing this, I, I, I think that's another step, proactive step, that the city of Norfolk has, has done. I mean, before I got on council, this is a proactive group that has seen the needs, and have followed through with the needs that, that have been brought forth. And I really, I, I'm in favor of this for the, for the future. So, I will, I will say that, this, if you, if you remember what this is for, maybe not be a, a today issue, but it will be a 20 and 30-year and 40-year commitment to keep our youth here and keep our continual, continuous growth, uh, which we have seen over the several years, so.
I'm just gonna add one thing to it. We had, we had a very similar thing for the library, right? Half-cent sales tax, I think it was three years, has a sunset. And I think there's talk out there of, this is just an open check, and we're just gonna spend money. And it's not. If there's an ability to pay it off early, whether that happens or not, I, I would assume that we could. But if not, I think we're still good stewards of the money and how much we borrow, and be done with it. So, this, no different than the library, has a sunset. And it does end. Yes, it's out there 20 years instead of three years, but look at the size of the project compared to the library. You look at Memorial Field Aquatic, um, the, uh, the Aqua Venture Memorial Field, I think we pay that off, how early? Nine years early? Nine years early. Again, good stewards with our money. This building, same way, paid that off early, just did it tonight. So, um, in, in any case, of the way we're looking at this, is not just an open check and, and just throwing it out there of having the, um, third-largest aquatic center out there, or the most baseball, softball fields, or adding, what, four more soccer fields, six, six more soccer fields. This is, this is us trying to, uh, put a best foot forward for the city of Norfolk and make it the best we can. And, uh, if you're not growing, you're dying, right? So, this is, this is the foot forward with all four projects that do run together simultaneously, help each other out, that will help more growth. Hotels have come up, uh, in past discussions, uh, you do things like this, more hotels are gonna come to town. We all know we need more hotels to come to town. If it comes to tournaments, uh, tournaments won't come to town unless you build something like this also. Same thing, hotels won't come to town if you don't have tournaments, something to support them. So, everything goes hand in hand here. And I think this is a, uh, a great project, to throw all of these four things together, and, uh, at least put it in the voters' hands to decide, do they want to make Norfolk better, or you just want to stay stagnant? That's all I got.
I'd like to just follow up with that, um, a little bit, in support of keeping this together. The police and the streets, that's a, that's a cost, uh, not really a economic driver, that's just a kind of a cost for us. I think you could look at the Aqua Center and the Tahazuka improvements as potentially an economic, uh, driver. I think, I think you have costs there, and I think you need to not only, uh, keep them together just because of cost, but I think that if you could bring two of them in there to pay for potentially the cost of the other two, I just think they complement each other very well.
Well said.
I was, uh, I had reservation too about not splitting them up before tonight, or before today, even, with some of the interaction I've had with people and talking to. However, sitting here tonight and even contemplating this, if they pass, and that's, it's, it, obviously, we pass tonight, it's gonna be voted on, so the, the, the citizens of Norfolk are gonna make the ultimate decision here. However, um, if you do split it up, and with the support you saw tonight for both projects, the, um, Tahazuka softball fields, baseball fields, and the aquatic center, you know that it's gonna be brought back before council. And at that time, it probably is gonna be on a half-cent sales tax issue, could be a bond referendum from the schools asking for a bond, because they want to put the facility in, and/or it's a occupation tax that's gonna be asked. So, all of a sudden, now you're gonna have not just a five-and-a-half percent increase, or a half percent increase on sales tax, you could possibly have a, uh, occupation tax that, you know, and a, if, if it doesn't get done, the schools want to do something, and they have to go out and raise money for it. So then now you're looking at three different sources of taxation. So, I just, with that being said, I don't know what will happen. I obviously know it's not a crystal ball, it's up to the voters, decide on what they want to do, it's a big number. But I think, you know, people will make up their minds and decide what they want to do. But with that, with my thought process, and sometimes I'm a stick in the mud, and I both go the opposite way, but I think that, uh, makes sense to put them all together.
Any other comments or discussion, Council?
I would just try to, I guess, wrap things up. Again, reemphasizing the point that this vote tonight is simply to move this, these proposals forward to put them in the hands of the voters, whether they vote yes or no. I personally think, um, these are sound plans. I think this hearkens back to a tradition of Norfolk throughout its history, being willing to do things a little bit different, differently, just because of where we are, not on an interstate system, not close to a metro. We've had to do things differently, and be independent, and be bold, uh, because of those very facts. I think maybe we got away from that in some periods of time, fall into trap of small thinking, but I don't think that time is, is now. I think what we've tried to embrace and do in this community in the last few years has, uh, taken on a spirit of being welcomed to new ideas, new ways of doing things, and new voices at the table. And all of that, in the end, goes to investing in ourselves, to make this a better place to live for generations to come. So I have no qualms about the work that's been done here, the community involvement, those people were excited about doing this. I think it's time to move forward and, and put this in the hands of the voters, uh, to, to determine if it's the direction that they want to go, if they want to continue moving in that growth direction. I think we should. But, at this point, unless there's any other questions or comments, I think we're ready to vote. I would make a note on this particular resolution, um, that it does require a supermajority of the council, so that's six votes. And, um, is there anything else to be said before we go to vote? Okay? No other comments? Then I would, is there, uh, sort of title or anything that you have to? Okay.
Nope. And we've got a motion in a second, so just need a vote.
Okay. Then ask for your vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Granquist, Arnz, Merrill, Uren, Jackson, Clausen, Hildebrand. Voting in opposition, McCarthy. Resolution 2022-41 is adopted.
Okay. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Good evening.